Where's Stevens?
Stevens, Dave.
I got a couple of minutes still. What does everybody else have?
All right, I have nine.
Nine o'clock, okay.
United States of America and the Republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approve the agenda. Has everybody got a copy of the agenda? Does anybody have any changes or... Yeah, does anybody have one or two?
We'll do it except.
All right. And then the next item on the agenda will be Tom Terry and Pat Fisher, I guess. Tell them about the Budget Finance Guidance Discussion.
We get the agenda approved?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I asked for it. I asked for it.
I didn't hear it down here. Did you?
I'm sorry. I'm asking for approval.
Okay, will we take a vote? All those in favor?
All those in favor of approval, that's all.
All right.
All right, and so now go back to the Budget Finance Guidance Discussion with Tom Terry and Pat.
Very hard job here this morning. Welcome, Pat. The Budget and Finance Committee from time to time has requested a face-to-face session with the Board to talk over their suggested guidance for this coming year's budget guidance that the Board will be giving Bob as he starts his budget process. Just for the information of the Board, I'm going to be taking the input and from this discussion, I will be adding this to the actual draft of budget guidance, which I hope to get out to everybody this afternoon. It's a draft of the Board's version of it for you to read it over and then open for discussion next week at the Board meeting. But I'll get it out this afternoon, but I wanted to wait till we had this discussion about this before I finish the documents. So you'll be getting two documents this afternoon. You'll have this already, but we'll send you this again. And then the draft of what the Board would say to Bob as far as guidance for him in developing budget. So I will at this point turn it over to Pat. It's all yours.
I brought copies. I think this was circulated last week, but I did bring copies.
I'm okay.
I'm okay.
You're okay?
Yes, we're okay.
I don't think it's any different.
No, we're okay.
Can I have a copy of that?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'll take one.
You have it memorized, Gene.
Your fingerprints are all over these things, Gene.
This is for the 2016-17 budget year, which I know I say it and I go.
Freaky.
Seventeen. Number one FTE, and these aren't in any particular order. This is just the collaborative thoughts and expertise of the committee members. It was the committee as a whole that met and discussed many topics related to the budget and came down to these six. And again, they're not presented in any particular order, but this is what the committee felt would be.
Dave, you want to get Dave a copy of this?
Sure.
Dave, we need a copy of this.
I could have one, but I'll use this one since you're out.
Since you're late, Dave.
Well, I had a pork back out on the west forty. I couldn't get a ride here to the...
Oh, I thought it was the school bus. That's the deal. It's a school bus. I love this man.
That's fine. Oh, well, thank you. Thank you for, I know that you gentlemen meet frequently and have a lot that you do, and I really appreciate, the committee really appreciates the time to meet with you face-to-face.
That's funny. When I sat with you guys, you never said that.
We do appreciate the time to meet with you face-to-face. FTE expense, we discussed with the committee. FTE expense, salaries and bennies are these. If you took natural class lines, that would be the biggest by far. We're a service organization. That's where all our dollars are. And so we felt that reviewing staffing by department for appropriateness of FTEs and salaries.
Does everybody know what FTEs is?
Oh.
Yep.
Paul, tell me a question. We were born at night, but not last night.
There you go. Just making sure.
If you don't stop talking, we won't be able to talk.
And we felt that frequently or the best, I guess, circumstance would be if you had legitimate comparisons for your organization out there. I come from a nonprofit background, so we would compare to other nonprofits. You come from a for-profit public company, you compare with other, you know, carmakers, widgetmakers, whatever. So the committee felt that government statistics may be the best for comparison, given that we are quasi-government type organization. And they recommend that the dollars be budgeted, or we recommend the dollars be budgeted, to have an outside study performed for this comparison. And this study could be used for both rate and position. Not the adequacy of the FTEs, but rate and position. The committee recommends that the human resource specialist and information technology.
How are we going to do this? We're going to go through the whole thing and then come back?
No, I'm comfortable. I mean, at the Board's pleasure, I'm comfortable answering as it comes.
I just had a couple of points I wanted to bring up. On the, based on my experience, you know, the corporate America that I came from, instead of using outside comparisons, what we did is we put the onus on the department manager to justify increase or even decrease in staff. How does that comport with going out and getting government statistics and comparing where we are?
Well, I'm not sure that I was looking, I mean, I'm not sure the committee was thinking government statistics for, do we need five people in Park and Rex? I don't think that there, but I think the government statistics were more for, we have a plumber and we pay him X dollars and bennies are there, whatever. Do you know what I mean?
Yes.
I don't know that there's another organization exactly like ours that would say, we need five plumbers, four policemen and ten, whatever, you know. And I do agree, yeah, that department head would certainly work to justify the staffing that they have, but we can justify positions frequently that...
Well, that's how you do it now, right, Bob?
Yes. Yeah, to be...
I understood, Pat, I understood the committee's request.
Yeah, number one is not the number of people. It's what they're paid and what their benefits are, right?
And their benefits.
Well, yeah. Let me just, if I may, Cheryl had a comment on that. I'm just going to interject hers. I have them out. Anybody else can. Her comment on this was FTE expense should not use government numbers for comparison as government employees are now generally paid higher than the private industry. I would not be in favor of spending to have an outside study. Regional information should be developed on a no-cost basis. So at any rate, that's her.
And I mean, you could get the idea of an outside study, pros and cons, of course, but I think the important thing is that the salary range and the benefits are reviewed for reasonableness, given the dollars that the organization spends in that area.
Staying on this point, if I may, that's my comment. No, that was Cheryl.
Okay.
And by the way, I agree with her. But I guess my question is, we have employees who have been working for very long, as the Department says, established on pay scales that basically have bumped up incrementally. We've hired new people, hold those. And I guess I don't know what can change. I mean, what this is going to do to make a difference for somebody. I'm sure they'll give us a lot of statistics to tell us something, but at the bottom line, at the end of the year, we're going to get a budget that's going to be based on certain salaries, and they're going to be the last salaries that we have. And we're going to say bump them up three percent or something, whatever, you know, different. And that's how our salaries are. Now, unless we're talking about some, you know, mega-change in our entire structure, I just don't see this happening.
And I don't think we picture it as a come and go-out and the world is good, even in one fiscal year. I think the benefit of really studying the salary structure is that you find out that you have a plumber at fifteen dollars an hour. And that plumber should be at twelve or twenty for the market. And so you take the organization over time, not next year, not a week, not whatever, take the organization over time to that twelve or that twenty for that particular position. That's, I think that's the intent in the outside study.
I think they call it a compensation review. I mean, I've worked in a hospital, worked in a bank, I've worked a lot of places, wherever you're working with, HR, working with compensation. And usually it was a telephone server, but you have to have somebody be able to know what you're doing to do it. So they call and they say, all right, you're an HOA, we've got this many people doing this. What are you doing? And can you send us some information? Because it's hard to say each individual position and judge, but if you have an idea of what the overall population's doing, and it's not, there are not that many HOAs that are our size, that's for sure. So there's not going to be a big law on drawing out stuff.
And also, given the number of staff we have and are required to have, knowing that we are in the market to attract the appropriate staff is equally important. I mean, this would know that we should be at this price point and this benefit package if we want to attract the best policemen, you know, whatever the position is.
Can I ask a question? Are we having trouble retaining our employees?
I don't know. I don't.
Does this seem to be a problem?
The only thing I've ever heard, Bill, Tom, an answer to that, two Toms, by the way, is that the police department said, or I've heard the police department doesn't pay as highly as Ocean City pays. So we lose some people occasionally in Ocean City or other places because if we don't pay, our pay scale's not as high as... I don't know. That's all I've heard was a little bit of fact or anything else, but there is a possibility that that could be a problem you'd look at.
Bob, I mean, have we lost any policemen?
We have.
Okay. And where have they gone? Do you know?
I do.
Do you know where they are?
I do. We, our recent loss went to Cambridge Police Department, Cambridge Police Department was our most recent. I say that, we had another gentleman depart, actually went to Salisbury Police Department as well.
Two? And over what period of time, Bob? Year or two years?
Yeah, that's probably the last eighteen months.
Eighteen months, yeah.
That's kind of the question. We don't know. Let me put it this way. We do not have the information at hand to say what our turnover is overall. Are we losing employees like that? I know the two places, or this is one of them. And so there's that, and there's how many people are we losing, really great candidates. A few times that we've gone and have to hire someone, and I'm not talking about necessarily. I was thinking more in terms of Yakuza records. But have we had a problem? I mean, have we said, no, you're not paying enough, but you'd be great there? I don't know. I don't know the definition.
In their exit interview, did they give a reason why they left?
Yes.
And what was the reason?
That's personal matter.
Yeah, you can't discuss it, okay. Did you say? I said, you can find that out, but just... Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, as long as the Board understands what the suggestion is and kind of where it came from, we're not here to debate each individual item just to make sure we understand what it is and what was behind. I think there were some good questions here, but it's just a matter of making sure everybody understands what these six things really stand for, where they came.
Is it okay to speak back here to that body?
I'm okay.
I'm going to be there.
I'm okay. I make a notion that the inept committee, if Pat has no objection, be allowed to speak.
Can we suspend the Parliament?
Suspend the Parliament. Everybody in agreement?
I'd be good. I like to hear what they have to say.
Does that include me? But I raised my hand first.
Except for Gene.
Except for Gene. Because he wrote this thing. I mean, for God's sake.
Pat, one of the other emphasis we had was a strong review of the benefits. Because the benefits we have least control over. But to go over all the benefits as part of this and the ratio of the salaries to benefits and ensure that we're getting, that we have the appropriate number of benefits and that the ratio is where it should, because you have least control over your benefit pattern.
The committee recommends that the human resources specialist and information technology positions be built as soon as possible, either with staff or by engaging an appropriate consulting firm. There are consulting firms in both of those areas present that...
Pat.
Do not, you know, you don't have to necessarily hire the body if that's not what...
Do you have any specific, does the committee have any specific recommendations to make this a reality?
I'm not sure.
I don't understand that either.
I'm not sure, you know, I know that it's, I know the committee's intent or thoughts in why we should have a human resources specialist or IT person, but making it a reality, I think that's...
There are two things, there are two things suggested in your verbiage. One is to hire an individual, and one is to look for an outside source, to outsourced it to some sort of consulting firm. Is there any particular recommendation that you make concerning those two options?
No, I don't think the committee, either, either or. And for our size organization, consulting, I mean, there are HR consulting firms now that do a very nice job. There are certainly IT consultants. You've got to know what you're talking about because there's a lot of people, because IT language is new and different, that can try to snow you, at least that's been my experience. But they are out there, and whatever works best for the organization, whatever manager would feel the most comfortable with, I think there either is a good, we might not need a full-time HR person outsourcing it. To get all the expertise might be the way to go. Same thing, IT.
Well, point is, Tom, you know this, Tom Terry. I've been on, I'm going into my third year, and we've been talking about this for two years now. And all I'm saying is, is this just a word document or is this an action plan? That's all.
Well, this document is just a suggestion from the Budget and Finance Committee.
Which, by the way, and the purpose is to formulate from this document...
The guidance.
The guidance to...
Well, that's right. You weren't here yet, just to make sure to get you up. After this discussion, I will be incorporating this information and whatever we come out of this discussion with into a draft for the Board for a full budget guidance document, which I should be able to get out to you all this afternoon. So you'll have draft, my underland draft of it for everybody to work, to look at, okay?
Okay. Now, I have one kind of question about that. I mean, this is, you know, the starting, but we also have from last year, last year's the same as your report, budget recommendations and guidance. I mean, are any of those things...
It's all going to be in the draft.
It's all about everything.
Yes, I know. I'm waiting to, you're finished. Okay, on the back.
For, this is a question of Bob, for the prior two budgets, like not the current budget cycle, because we had an HR position budgeted, but then this current budget, that was dropped. Was there a reason for that?
Yeah, we discussed it. Know that.
No, I say, would you remind me?
Sure, sure.
I was not able to attend all the budget meetings on this chair because I was...
No, no, that's fine. We attempted to secure HR support from several different perspectives before hiring a full-time person or a person to fill that role. We tried using a software program this year, and that didn't work to the level we had hoped it would. That was the previous year. This year, we were using, we went back to ADP for our payroll services, who we've been using their HR support, which has worked better for us. So it has been the last two years, and we've tried two very distinctive and different strategies before we hired someone in that position.
Now it's ADP, yes.
We're utilizing the ADP services to answer our HR questions.
And along the same vein, the IT position is in this year, but it has been in the last two, we're going in our third year, do we, are we having problems trying to attract someone?
We're not having any problems. We just haven't hired for the position until we decide which type of IT support we need and ask her to be determined by which type of infrastructure we decide to employ. Very different type of hiring process based on the skills needed to support that.
I'll make one comment that in the corporate world I came from, if a person was unsure what they wanted, we told them, don't put it in budget, be sure what you want.
Thank you.
I'm just saying, don't put it in it to be sure, you know what you want.
Okay.
Let me respond to that for a second, just to make sure we're clear. It's a very good comment, except that the directive to put it into the budget came from the Board of Directors.
Say that again, Tom. I'm sorry.
It's like the directive to put someone in there for it to be the IT department head actually came from the Board of Directors. It wasn't Bob.
You're talking about the personnel individual.
I'm responding to his comment. My comment would be to the whole, okay, if you're not sure what you want, don't.
Okay. Now, Dave.
Yeah, well, that's kind of a good gas off on me. What I was going to say is, first of all, I mean, I go back to 2007, and HR was always a conversation, and the need for an HR person goes back to that difficulty, and I think it carries over to IT, is that there are a lot of different HR roles, and depending on what kind of corporation you're in, depends on how that corporation is organized, and it's so many. The one thing that was never clear, there was a lot of different opinions on it, is what that HR person is actually going to do. And I think unless you have that, there's no point in having a conversation. I mean, unless you have it right now, this is what we want this person to do. I mean, and it might be just a segment of the overall, a matter of fact, I'm sure, what do you say, the overall potential HR responsible. There might be a Vex person. It might be a legal person. I mean, that is to say, somebody who's going to ensure an appliance, state, federal, whatever. There's a lot of things. See, at work could be a segment, you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'll back up what Dave is saying. I've worked in HR for most of my career. A part of the time I was with personnel, and the other part of the time I was with finance department. We worked on both sides, and of course, when you do one or the other, it's totally different aspect about how you handle what you're doing towards HR's concern.
Yeah, if I may, just one more. I sort of touched, but there's also a question in terms of how HR responds or interacts with management. And management, Board in our case, Board is a lot, it's not like faraway corporate Board, it's inactive Board. So one side, there was always a certain, HR was always separate or independent, that is to say, they were an independent, similar to, I'd say, RARC, kind of like that. In other words, somebody could go to them, an employee, and say, look, this isn't right. I don't think it follows the board in my case or whatever.
True. That's correct.
And that's correct, okay? And there are other cases. I mean, in many cases, of course, they're right high very closely to management or corporations like that. So, you know, the question is, that is the question, what are they here to hire this person? What is he or she? So it's complicated, if you like.
To obtain the best price and service consolidate under contract with vendor, the same vendor that you're purchasing across departments of service or, I hope I called it game up, for example, if we buy Coke at, you know, ten different points along the organization, would we get a better price if we had one contract with the Coke distributor for the entire organization?
I have a question to Bob. Bob, I know you do this on a regular basis in buying, you know, capital items, whatever. Something I ran into the other day, have we ever thought about as an organization joining up with other jurisdictions to combine our capital needs with them, and instead of buying one machine, these jurisdictions would buy three of them, perhaps getting a discount across the board for purchasing multiple items? And I'm thinking of like a long-reach lawn mower. They're expensive. What do they run, about thirty-some thousand dollars, something like that? So, you know, if the county needs one, Ocean City needs one, Berlin needs one, and Ocean Pines needs one, has it ever been considered to consolidate, you know, that need and perhaps look for a vendor to supply all three or four entities?
My knowledge, and certainly certainly not with my time in this chair, have we consolidated purchasing equipment through multiple agencies?
It probably takes a heck of a lot of work to do that.
It would take somebody to set up every piece of equipment, okay, you use it this day, you, oh, what I need it this day.
You're misunderstanding. Instead of buying one piece of equipment, you buy four. In other words, if Ocean City needs a long reach, and the county needs a long reach, and Berlin needs a long reach, and he needs a long reach, you buy four of them, and you get a discount on four multiple items. The downside is, it's a heck of a lot of coordination between those entities. That's the downside. But it's just something to consider, right? You know, that's all.
We recommend a membership-type fee for non-residents while maintaining the activity fee differential in order to decrease the net subsidy for parks and recreation. And this would be for summer camps, whatever activities we have that we offer to the community at large, as well as residents, to increase the differential. I think we charge a differential to non-residents now for the particular activity, the discussion centered around some kind of membership fee for non-residents. So that would add just another layer of income over and above individual activity fees.
Pat.
Yes.
If I may.
Go ahead, yes.
When we say...
Miss Pat.
I can't, yeah, Miss Pat.
Is he a schoolmarm now?
No, that sounded...
Ma'am.
Ma'am, yeah, okay.
Refresh my memory when we're talking about this membership fee for non-residents. I'm getting, some people use non-residents to mean non-members. And some people use non-residents to mean people that don't live in a community, even though you can have people that are in a community who are not members but are residents, so...
Well, what would that be, Gene? Now, this means anybody...
I'm saying renters. I'm saying renters. Renters are not members of the association. And so they're residents. That's what that means. And so I don't know what we mean by non-residents. Are we saying that, are we using that term for non-members, or are we using that term strictly to mean non-residents? Our intention, I think, was non-residents.
That's what I, I agree, John, I think it was non-residents, yeah.
Anybody that's in the pines, own a house or rent a house.
Yeah, you were here.
So, so, so if somebody is renting in the pines, they are not a member, but they, we wouldn't, we wouldn't require them to have this membership fee? Is that what we're saying?
Yes.
But on the other hand, if I own a property over in Rockville, and, and I come to visit a few times, then I must have a membership fee, and that is membership. I don't understand.
If you come and visit.
If I own a property, I'm a member, I'm a member of Ocean Pines.
Right, right, yes. We are saying that, we are saying that. What Gene's question was about renters, and I think the committee's intent was, was the fee for people that do not reside in the pines.
And also are not members of the association.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, renters are.
If, if, and another, I mean, another thing that the committee discussed is, can this be affected, I mean, can you do this? Are you going to have a membership fee of $20 and cost you $22 to administer that, to have it happen, to, you know, manage it? I don't know, the committee just is recommending that that may be a differential.
Memberships are generally associated with activity. So, in other words, in the golf course, for example, you have associate memberships, pickleball associate membership, pay the membership, and there's a differential for associate membership, and that's that. There are, it's not a double, they don't pay the.
No, the alternative was, was to make the differential a little bigger than what it is right now, for, especially with park, correct, because I don't think the differential is that, that significant now.
Tom, I mean, what we're really talking about, okay, if there's an activity fee, okay, you have an activity fee for non-members, why would you just not increase it? If that's all you're talking about. Otherwise, you have to, now, if somebody has, wants to be a pickleball player, and wants a membership, have an association, same thing. So, if the problem is that you don't have enough money, the simplest way to do it is just increase the differential.
Well, Bob, based on your experience, what's, what's the downside in increasing the differential?
Potentially turning away business. I mean, so it is, we just have to look at, I mean, I understand what they're saying, if it's a non-resident or non-member of Ocean Pines, someone from outside uses a service, is there a wide enough gap in what we charge them versus what we charge our interns? I understand, we can certainly look at that.
Got it.
One other comment, I know that we're competitive with the county, garden parks and recs are part of our programs, they have the same thing. So, I can understand where we could price ourselves out of business if county is going to undercut this, but the committee also discussed and came to no conclusion, if the county offers us the services, why do we duplicate? But anyway.
Yeah, right, pitch point. But still, I'd be more inclined to go the non-member, not non-resident. Say that again, Bill. I'd be more inclined to go the non, and here it says non-resident, which does not, which does not.
I agree with Bill.
Renters, so non-members, you know, takes renters.
I agree with Bill. Non-members is better nomenclature.
If I could add something, because I was here for one of the conversations you had about this particular, part of the reasoning behind this, as I remember the discussion, it was, if somebody comes in and takes A class at public, you know, at the community center, and pays $5 more because they're not a member, you know, they've paid $5 more while the other people have paid over $900 to be a member of the organization, and paid $5 less. So, the concept here was to have a one-time fee of something that says, if you want to take A class or 50 classes, you still got to get this card that says you've kind of added up something for the, for the right to be, to participate in this stuff and still pay a differential. So, even if you made the differential, hang on, but even if.
No, 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 I, I, and still pay the differential, a fee plus the differen, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I was, the thought behind it was more of a table stakes approach, you know, you, you know, you're paid to get in to be able to play, you know, to participate, so that the differential, while it's five bucks, you still paid something to have the right to participate. Where the legalities of all this are, I don't know, but, but, but that was the other part of the discussion, was more of a $5 for one class doesn't really make that much of a difference, but if you had to pay something, then you could take as many classes as you wanted on that same card.
But the, the, am I right in that, from what I remember?
Kind of like a contribution to the, the whole community thing, because the members are paying the infrastructure costs, the capital costs.
Right.
Well, in that conversation, was it mentioned as to how this card or this, this fee would be monitored? In other words, let's say, I assume we're also talking about, what's it called, Bob, the Thursday night movie, the, the movie program that we have in White Horse Park?
Movies in the Park.
What, Movies in the Park, yeah, I've forgotten the name.
Concerts in the Park on Thursday.
And concerts in the park, okay. So, that's open to the public, and that, so if, in order, I think what I'm hearing is, in order for people who live in Bishopville to participate in that concert in the park, they have to be.
No, no.
If you couldn't monitor that.
No.
It's only if there's a fee associated with the class or something, am I right? If I remember the discussion?
Right, right, right.
I need, I need a fee-based activity, yeah. And the administration is often be as simple as just issue a card, you know, like you issue cards for parking for a week at the beach, right?
So, you have something like aquatics, I pay, because I'm a member, I'm in the association, so I pay a certain rate here, but somebody who lives outside the area, which I have two friends that live, that live down in West Ocean City, not anymore, but anyway. If they live down in West Ocean City, they pay a higher rate, that's all they pay. Are you going to charge them an additional?
Yeah, a one-time, a one-time, one-year.
Membership.
Yeah, I, I can see the principle, and it applies better for something like classes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, if you want to use anything in Ocean Pines, or let's say classes.
Relatively, yeah.
You have to have a card, okay, well, for there, it might help, and people, you have to monitor, of course. Then, if you extend it over, you just did aquatics, and say, okay, we're going to include, let's just extend it all the way out, all our fee basics, okay? So, in order to use the swimming pools at Ocean Pines, first have to become a member of Ocean Pines, they have parks, whatever it was, okay? If you want to play golf, you have to have a park, have a.
So, that would, you just said aquatic membership, is that what you're saying?
I said aquatics, but then moved on to golf, moved on to golf. If you want to go to the aqua.
I don't suppose the aqua.
I, I, you know.
The intent of all this in the beginning was to try to offset the $600,000 expense in parks and recs. That was the entire reason why this came up in the first place, to offset that expense.
Okay, so you're targeting that specific thing, so that'd be more specific. And, I don't know, I, I still think using the differential is the simplest.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Probably is.
I agree with you.
As long as everybody understands the recommendation.
Yeah.
For presentation and analysis purposes, develop and utilize a top-down budget report which presents the major budget changes, budget to projected actual with prior budget included. This should include assessment impact. Budget reports should include comparison by department and natural class line item across organization. And I think that, I think that, I think that this, the committee's discussion about this centered around, the budget is ready for presentation, management has developed their budget, it's ready to be presented to Board of Directors, and I believe the committee is, is there also. And this is the presentation of the budget information for analysis purposes. And I think it was envisioned that, for example, the major budget impact is a 3% salary increase. That's the major budget impact year over year. The major budget impact is repairs to the swimming, year over year. Whatever the major impact budget changes are year over year are presented, and I think something, something like this is done in general every year, but I think the committee wanted to support, reinforce this concept. Also, the assessment impact year over year, $3 went here, $4 goes here, $2, $5, because frequently, it's been our experience that, you know, $2 items, not necessarily on management's part, but $2 items bubble up to be, you know, a five-hour discussion, while the $2800, you know, impact is not, or whatever the numbers are, you know, too much for the assessment. But I think that the reasonableness of increases, decreases, what comes out when this kind of report is presented in this fashion.
So, what you're saying is, you'd also come up with something to say, the line items, and you would say FY16, and what the cost was down to 921, then the 917 would come down to impact cost down to $300, okay? You're going to drop that assessment.
I'm lost.
Uh, uh, yeah, flush it out.
That's what you would show, so people can look at the line items and say, well, if it's going to go up this much, then maybe we ought to take this out, we ought to change this. That gets a lot easier for the, for us.
Well, I don't know, I don't know. You're talking about reallocation of resources now, or capital, yeah, which is great, yeah, right. No problem there, but I don't know that that's what they're looking for here.
Can I, can I?
Sir, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Gene.
We, we have had, we have had in the, for a few years running, we would get the details in the binder, and then have scheduled meetings with all the department managers, and in my view, and viewed a committee, and kind of like lessons learned, is, in some cases, we're wasting time with those managers, because, you know, they're coming in and waiting for us, you know, and it, there's, there's not really much to talk about. So, we decided that as a committee, we would like some kind of top-down start with the overall change in assessment, and then drill down to the major impacts, so that we as a committee can say, oh, let's focus here, and maybe we need to talk to the public works guy, but we don't need to talk to Teresa, maybe we need to talk to this department head, but maybe we don't need to talk to that, so that we can drill down and, and concentrate on major impacts, and it would also be quicker to spot these impacts where they're happening. We feel, or the board, to get some kind of summary, top-down, drill-down kind of summary.
So, if there's no assessment, you guys just go.
That's right. That's one of the maps, dude.
How about assessment?
We're not going to be that, you know.
Dumb.
Can I ask you one quick question? What is the actual class line item?
That would be salaries, rent.
Contracts.
Contracts, that's individual expense or revenue line items as a natural class, sorry.
As opposed to unnatural.
Right.
Natural class.
And sometimes when you do that, and, and I don't think we do, you know, Bob certainly may do that, I don't believe I've seen that in the presentation, and sometimes when you do that, expenses, reasonableness or unreasonableness pop out across organizations, across the organization, office supplies, for example, whatever, whatever the line item is, it, it sometimes helps. And usually, I don't, I mean, I don't think this would be an onus, I would, I think our software do that, I don't know, I know our financial software, maybe another topic of discussion, but usually, it spits it out both ways, and it's just a good tool, tool, I think, to look, and you can, you know, year over year.
Would maintenance be a natural class?
It, it could be, I don't know how, you mean, maintenance as, as.
Kind of capital item?
No, 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 I don't, I mean, no.
No, it's an operation item, it's spread across local departments, a different way.
If you, if you charge, if, when you charge an expense, it's charged to a line item called maintenance, then it's a natural class. I don't know that we have maintenance as a, as an individual expense line item.
Well, it depends on what.
I would think you'd have tools, labor, I would think it would be broken down into a lot of other things, and then rolled into maintenance, possibly.
I think, yeah.
Do you know what I mean?
I think both, I know, I do know what you mean. I just asked a question.
Yeah, yeah, it kind of breaks down, and I guess you can go as far as you.
Could I, my problem with discussion of bringing some in and not bringing some in, if, you know.
Oh, back to Gene's.
Yeah, Gene's, if, if they have a, you know, a decrease in assessment, I think we're shooting arrows at, at assessment values, and I don't think we should be doing that if it's, if it's, okay, we're only going to take the decrease, and we're going to take it because it's a decrease, there may be items while we're going through the budget, we should be adding this, we should, we should be adding that.
No, no.
I'm afraid that we're going to be, okay, that's the point where we want to be, so we got to, so we got to make it.
No, 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 that was, the committee never, I don't believe, to a man, discussed the assessment from that point of view. I think our intent with that discussion was, we frequently, as an organization, seem to spend untold hours discussing something that is a $2 impact on the assessment, and it is beyond belief to me and the committee that this happens, and that's the intent of that statement. Let's not get all exercised and, and spend, you know, our day discussing a $2 change to the assessment, let's go back, look at the big picture of the organization, where are we going, what do we want to do, what kind of an organization do we want to be, what's our purpose, what's our mission, what's our vision, and how do we get there? All we do is discuss what is $4, you know, on the assessment, instead of we want to be a premier community on the eastern shore of Maryland that offers these services to our residents, and how do we get from here to here? And if the assessment should be 900, that's fine, if it should be 1,000, that's fine, for us to be that kind of organization.
Suppose it should be 800?
Well, it should be 800, that's fine. The, the mission, the vision is what drives that, not the $2 on the assessment.
Yeah, I think, Pat, excellent point, because we did not have that kind of guidance at the end, we had the budget number, we knew approximately what the impact of a fire condition was, we started from there. But Marty did a good job, I mean, he put this all down, and it came out to a very low number, then the rest was jumped on and said, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, but he had the outline, which is what you're talking about, that's what you had, begin with, and then we can have the discussion much more intelligent beginning, instead of the way we ended up throwing knives at each other until we got there at
Right, right.
Almost 11th hour, we passed on.
Right.
So, I think that's an excellent, excellent, at least we should try.
At least we should try, and, you know, I mean, who knows where the assessment should be, but we should be working toward the assessment being such that the organization, that the association, the organization, the community will thrive in future years, not do we save $4 this year, will we be this premier organization down here?
Well, can you really ask that broader question, and then, I mean, translate it into specifics in the budget?
I think that's where you have to start. I can't imagine starting for an organization anywhere else.
Well.
I can't.
I'll suggest something.
Okay.
Before you're imagining.
Okay.
And that's, well, do now, I mean, fundamentally, go budget, we look at last year's budget, we see what has to change, Bob sees what has to change, we recommend, or discusses in future spaces, and we, but, year to year. Now, the idea of having a going-back mission, looking at the broader picture, where are we shooting? It's been done, remember the missionaries, Gene? Yeah, I mean, it's been done, or it's been done seriously, but it never translates into a budget picture for the next year, I mean, it doesn't, it can't enter the conversation.
We didn't have the system to support that either.
And we didn't have a system, we still don't.
I know.
So, so nothing's changed in that respect. I'm not trying to just throw cold water on it.
Right, right, right.
Of course, we should look at the big picture, of course, we should have those missions, those states in mind, where we want to be.
But if it's a drill-down report, all it does is focus you on the biggest item down to the smallest, where instead of you just jump right into the details.
Well, if you're looking at, if you're looking at the budget as a whole, and say, where do you end up, what are the measurements at there, if that's, if that's what this means, and sure. What are the, we did that, Wes?
For the purposes of the budget guidance document, I'm going to.
For the purposes of the budget guidance document, I'm gonna propose that I treat five as not a budget guidance, but a process suggestion. So that it won't, I wouldn't put it in as part of the budget guidance document that I would draft for the board, but that it would be a separate. Because what you're really talking about is procedurally staying focused on the big ticket items.
Yes, absolutely.
And the things that really make a difference, not, you know, my favorite one, not whether you have a five thousand dollar ad on a trolley or not.
That is, that was the committee's intent with number five, as usual. Tom, you said it much better than, than I. And that was the intent, to focus on the big picture, long term. And the mission and the vision, I believe, are part of every year's budget. That's mine, that's mine, you know.
Okay.
And our committee's. And to that end, part of the process, any departmental level revenue or expense increase or decrease of fifteen percent or fifty thousand dollars, whichever is greater, year over year, requires justification. Again, the intent of this was that, so that we're not sitting there discussing a change from five thousand dollars to fifty one hundred dollars in some line item. And I've actually been there and witnessed that. So that's just to keep the focus on what the drivers are, what's really impacting, and is it the right thing to do? Relevant objective performance metrics should be used in documenting expenses and revenues.
Can you flesh that out a little bit, Pat?
Which one?
The.
Departmental level?
Yeah, the review. How often are you recommending that be done? We talk in quarterly, we talk in annually?
For the budget.
Any revenue, expense incomes?
No, for the budget process, for the budget process.
Okay, then, then who, to whom, who, who does?
When, 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 when Bob is presenting the budget, if he is budgeting fifty thousand dollars more in a line item, or fifteen percent, and that happens to be greater than fifty thousand dollars. I don't know the individual line items to mention that, then justification is needed. And that, again, is to focus discussion on the big picture so that we're not discussing a thousand dollar increase.
Got it.
In a line item, in an eight million dollar budget, because we have.
I know that.
As an organization.
Let me just interject with Cheryl's comment on it. And I think she got the same misunderstanding that the tax did in that she was looking at reporting revenues and expenses like on financials. But anyway, she says, revenue or an expense of plus or minus of fifteen percent or fifty thousand dollars. Fifty thousand dollars seems like a large number. And wouldn't an increase require an explanation or a justification? Well, in the case of financials, it would require an explanation. In the case of the budget.
Budget, it's.
It's a justification. Okay.
And fifteen percent or fifty thousand dollars, that certainly can, you know, can be discussed relative to the, to the size of our budget. That was just a recommendation, maybe. And number six?
Well, the relevant objective performance matrix. Do you have an example of that?
Uh, well, I always go back to FTEs, but because that's where all our dollars are. Food served, I don't know, something that would give you, we serve twenty eight meals and it costs five dollars a meal. That's a metric. And so the budget is X. It's to go back to cost per item, things of that nature.
Okay.
We can put out twenty meals a day. I mean, I'm not an expert. I'm not even good at any of the areas that we offer services on healthcare background. But, you know, we can do twenty meals a day. Costs us five dollars a meal or something like that.
But that's.
And I don't know if those metrics are even, again, I'm health background, Gene. You know, some of our backgrounds, those kind of metrics readily available. I knew how many FTEs you needed on unit six at midnight. You know, I knew how much it should cost us for a meal. I knew, you know, that those kind of things. I don't know what metrics are available for our organization. I think that may be a problem, that there's not comparatives out there. But anytime there are, I think it's always good to use that, not necessarily as a gospel, but, okay, this is a good guide. We should be able to, with ten people, put out fifty meals a day. Or something like that. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, sure. But the example of the food is exactly what people, a couple committees have been trying to do. They're trying to find out what we're charging per plate, how much we're making per plate. And no business puts that out into the public domain. What percentage or profit they're making off of each customer. And that's, that's dangerous, getting any business, no business putting that out.
Right, right. No, and I just went there, I just went there because it was a thing that came to my mind. But we could, it could be, you know, how long does it take a maintenance man to mow, you know, mow three streets or something? I don't know. Anything that gives us some basis. I mean, it's, you know, of comparison to the world at large.
Back to that question, do we know what ours are? In regard to the restaurant, the cost of the food, profit? I mean, you say like no restaurant.
The managers know.
Do they?
No.
That's my question. I mean, you say the managers know, all right, fine. As long as the managers know, then somebody can make a decision about whether that's an acceptable amount or not.
Correct.
And there are some standards in the.
The board and, and everybody else, eighty four hundred and fifty two people, shouldn't be making that decision on what we're charging per plate to, you know.
This is for.
I agree with that.
No, 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 no. That's not where the.
No, no, this is for management as a tool for developing the budget, coming up with, with, you know, the dollars, revenue and expense bill, not, not. And I do regret that I started off with food. It's just, I must be hungry. It's just. Right up there.
Just right.
I'll make a comment.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
In the corporate world where I came from.
PG&E, right? You were, you were an accountant at PG&E?
Yeah, I worked for a utility. I'm a utility man. But I was in budgeting accounting.
Oh, okay.
Capital too, and depreciation.
I guess Jack, I'm sure. Could we talk about that too?
I wanted to, and where I came from, we used what was called, we tried to find out on comparable activities, best practice metrics, so that we could compare ourselves to find out whether we in the lower quarter or upper quarter. That was all.
Yeah.
We were striving to get all our operations on a broad scale in the upper quarter, in the industry, upper quartile, rather, in the industry. But to do that, we had to go out and find all these metrics and find out who had the best practices and the best metric. And it was just for a comparison. And when you did hit that metric, there could be very legitimate reasons. And you say, okay, we're not the same as everybody else in this regard. It's not that you're gonna dictate that you have to do it that way. It just gives you a guide. If you're way over or way under, maybe that raises a question better, or, you know, whatever. That's all it was. It's not, and it helps just to say, is this reasonable? With regard to the, you could use revenue per dollar of expense, the other way around. You know, something like that, pair that. That's a metric. And it's broad enough, not that, you know, say I'm gonna price a plate of hamburgers. Although I think it should.
Oh, you must be hungry too, Gene, huh?
If it's not a very detailed thing, by the way.
I'm sorry.
Food beverage metrics, I can pull out a report that we had done, what, eight years ago? And, and the same metrics will apply. I mean, you're looking at the cost of food and beverage, you're looking at basically what your margins are. And, you know, we're not supposed to set those margins as a board or anything like that. But we do have to look at whether or not they're being used and whether or not they're being reasonable. I mean, that's all. So I, I don't know that this is, I think this is a reasonable thing to do across the board. And we should have them available to us, if we ask. Like, capital budget.
And number six, capital budget should be presented separate from operating budget. We, I believe it is, let's continue that. And be structured in a rolling multi-year format, which includes budgeted but unexpected capital items from prior years. Requests for newer replacement capital expenditures should include dollars and rationale. And, and separate from, from the budget process, but it would impact the budget. We recommend increasing the capital threshold to two thousand dollars. I think that it's currently a thousand or fifteen, a thousand. Now, that's gonna have, going to two thousand in one year would clearly have implications for the operating budget if we needed to pull money. So maybe if we go from a thousand to two, we do it in two years or three years. But, but capitalizing a thousand dollars, given the size of our budget and today's cost and all that, seems, seems to be a low number. So just, just, the committee believes it should be closer to two thousand dollars for capital. And the multi-year format, I think this was one of the most important items that we discussed. The committee felt that, given the nature, capital by its very nature is more than a year. And you, you know, you have something in the budget, like a building, and, and all of a sudden, next year, that thing falls off the budget, and what do you do? I think a rolling year to year. We budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for this particular item. We started it in March. We didn't finish it. That rolls into the next year. We budgeted last year a new, I don't know, truck or something. I don't know what it would be. We didn't end up needing it by the end of the year, but clearly this year we're going to. So that truck come into next year's, into next year's budget. And it, you know, it doesn't change or the capital budgeting process from a sense of what you need to budget for. It just eliminates going back and saying, oh, I still need that truck. I still, you know, it just kind of rolls forward. If you needed that truck.
Yeah, we had this discussion. That goes way back. Yeah. And the, the concept or the idea is to eliminate the friction about it not being in this current year's budget. So that, you know, that truck that Bob didn't have an opportunity to buy for, for, you know, probably a good reason.
Right, right. He still needs it.
Is in addition to the, to the fiscal year that we are currently budgeting, is in addition to that budget.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll be getting, just to be clear, Jack, you're right. We talked about this.
Many times.
Many times, yeah. The second document you're gonna get this afternoon is another one that I've worked with the committee on and from the discussions at the last meeting. It's gonna be a write-up on number six, is what this specifically means, how it impacts us, what the suggestion would do. But I mean, in a nutshell, it's what Jack just said. It allows for the dollars that have already been approved in a budget. And we're not talking, well, you're talking, very rarely do we collect new dollars that don't end up being spent. It has happened, but very rarely. So we're not talking about an impact on assessment. We're talking more about the concept of you're spending money that wasn't in the budget. Well, a board approved the dollars. The money is in the reserve account already. And the, you know, to get into an argument because it wasn't listed the next year, when it's already been in a previously approved budget, it's just get away from all that arguing and put together, it was their idea, which teamed up with stuff we've talked about, at least, of it being a rolling capital, year over year. It just keeps going. So you're not looking at a budget that is three hundred and sixty five days. You're looking at multiple years when you're putting this thing together. It just conceptually expands. You'll get a document this afternoon that will explain more detail.
And a follow up on that too, also, if you collect for a specific item in a given year and you don't spend it this year, don't spend it on something else this year or next year so that you identify this dollar collected is for this purpose and that's what it's there for, unless you decide not to use it, not to use that purpose.
Sure.
Okay.
And that, and that's in the documents you'll get this afternoon, too.
If you're gonna put that document together, there's, there's a couple things that I might ask you to consider. You know, when we're, when we're looking at capital construction and things of that nature, I would like to see some more detailed plans and specs, you know, as these things roll forward, if they're going to be in a budget. How do you budget for something if you don't have plans and specs? I mean, shouldn't plans and specs come first and then the budget?
Not necessarily.
Well, for an example, last year, you know, my good friend Bill was very much interested in a five hundred thousand dollar lay aside for the police department. Okay? How do we know it's five hundred thousand dollars? I mean, there are no plans and specs. There's no, there's no real research done as to, you know, how much a renovation would, would cost. So it's like a chicken, chicken and an egg question. Why, I mean, don't you do the investigation first, then set money aside?
I'm not arguing one way or another. I don't disagree with what you're saying, except that there's a, when you're looking at a long-term view of capital budgeting, the further out you go, the less specific you're gonna be. If you're obviously talking about the next three hundred and sixty five days, you should have some level of spec or some idea of what it is you're really talking about.
Yeah, that's the truck and all that, just.
Beyond that, you know, you may not have it, but you should at least have it on the radar. And again, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, what I'm hearing from the committee, I agree with it, so, but their words too, not mine, it's more of a long-term view on these things as opposed to looking at just three hundred and sixty five days. Well, that's the budget that this board would approve under their authority. When you're planning and putting budgets together, even some of it operationally, you should look beyond, you know, what's the impact of this gonna be two years down the road? Operationally, what's it gonna be capital? So if I'm right, the concept is more take a longer view of things when you're looking at them, right? Okay, that's what I heard them talking about. I clearly agree with it, but that will start with something.
First, first of all, budgeting by itself is only a component of a planning.
Right, that's correct. Which is basically what Jack.
Budgeting without plans is, to me, and in my court, you had the plans first, the long-range plans, the intermediate range, and you budget it then. Secondly, what I have proposed many times in my fabulous career here is that what we don't have.
Don't bring up the treasure sticker.
No, 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 I'm not bringing it up. Is that we don't have project to date budget projects that are, we know pretty much are gonna go on just a year.
That's.
And that's what, that's the thing you need, is to have not only the current year budget, but a project to date budget. Because as it rolls into a two or three year project, you know what you're spending.
But the reason for that, Gene, Jeff, a plan, a project, we had a plan. We couldn't, we created a budget.
But in fact, we do have projects that go across years.
We do have projects that go across years, but they're not necessarily planned. That's why you have a problem with budgets. The, there are two things. The, in terms of the budget, there are things that we actually budget coming from, but will be multi-year in nature. And we know what those things are. They're either a truck or they could even be a major project, you know, a swimming pool or whatever. And you have those, and you say, okay, now it's a function of timing. This fiscal year, the next fiscal year. And you can, you can definitely say, okay, we're budgeting a million dollars for this, which in this budget, seven hundred and fifty thousand will be spent. Now, that's very specific. You have a plan and you know what you're gonna do. It's very good. The more general problem is that we also have things in the years that we don't know what we're going to do or how we're going, or what they're gonna cost. And those things should not be associated with the budget. Does that mean that we don't collect money for them? We don't have a reserve for them? That's what reserves are for. At least something, at least something. We should collect money for them. We should have a reserve. But it's a separate issue. On the one hand, we have to figure out this and the next year's budget. I'm not gonna pull it out. I don't know where the timeline goes. I mean, and neither can Bob, really, realistically. I mean, he gets to the end of, you make the budget now, the end of next April, we start that fiscal year, and then he's got to figure, I mean, that's the amount of time he's got to get to a specific project. And sometimes, things will happen and we won't be able to make.
Part of what you'll see in the, part of what you'll see in the document this afternoon references that.
But you have to separate that from the overall reserve problem. And that's where, and by the way, if you want big ticket items, that's the big ticket item. It's a huge ticket.
In, in this document, are you gonna address planned maintenance?
No, this is more of a how do you manage the dollars from year to year? And it's, it's at ten thousand feet at this point, conceptually. But the piece that's actually missing, and it's one that, that I think I've had discussions.
it's one that, that I think I've had discussions with many people, is there, there's no real mechanism in Ocean Pines that is approved for carryover. In other words, something is budgeted for this year to be spent and it gets to be March and it looks like we're not going to make it.
Well, you just addressed that.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we addressed that.
That's what they're saying is that that needs to, formally, there's no way for Bob and the staff to have been authorized to do that. In other words, if it didn't, we do our budgets starting in October through February, and then by the end of April, something may or may not have been done. And they thought it would be done by that time. There is no mechanism for the dollars to be grandfathered, if you will, from this year to that year where they can say, you know, we have these dollars in this budget. It's been approved. We didn't get it spent in this fiscal year. Well, we've already passed the budget for the next fiscal year.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you end up with, you're spending money that's out of budget when in fact it was in budget. And that's all this is.
But, but, but isn't it, isn't it a simple matter for Bob to carry those dollars over?
We have to approve it. Yeah. There's no mechanism for us to do that. That's part of this suggestion.
But we're approving it in March.
No, we're not. Because you don't know that the money, it didn't get spent. That, that.
I see.
See what I'm saying?
I got it. I got it. I got it. I got it.
That's what they're talking about.
It's out of sync.
It's out of sync.
It's out of sync. I got it.
You thought something was going to be done in this fiscal year. It isn't done, but you already passed the budget for the next fiscal year. So Bob is stuck spending money, quote, "out of budget" because it wasn't in the budget for the next year. Well, all this is a process that has to be approved by the board to say he has the right.
So there's a possibility that we would approve a budget for X amount of dollars and we would have a set aside. Money's not expended, you're expensed.
It's carried over.
Yes. In, in the prior fiscal year, that would be added to this budget, may or may not be expensed in this budget.
Right. And we don't change boards to August.
It's, Bob, that makes sense to you.
The idea is it's still under the purview of the same.
Same board.
Same board. And the board, and, and just to carry it out, you'll get this all in the document. But basically, if it goes further than that, the new board has the right to, to, to rescind the carryover that if the work didn't get done, forget it. Because we don't have the authority to impose on another board what it is.
It's true.
We don't have that authority. But he, he needs this mechanism so that we don't end up in these arguments over money being spent, quote, "out of budget" when in fact it was in a budget at one point. That's, it's one of many pieces of what they're talking about.
Your document is addressing what I would call reasonably well-defined projects.
Sure, sure it is.
So, I mean, in other words, there was a plan. I mean, there are maybe specifications. I mean, maybe I'm correct, but on the whole, this is where we're going to build. This is how long it's going to take.
Exactly.
Okay.
That term carryover is a term that you, to make a capital budget, carryover dollars, dollars.
I'd like to ask this, just as a put-out-there question. If that's the case, reasonably well-defined, I mean, would our guidance be not to budget items that are not reasonably well-defined, don't have a specific plan, design for, because that's where the issue comes. Things that haven't even gotten to the point where they could be approved by a board, but we're putting in place.
Well, in a guidance document, you would say you want those plans. You want that information. Then at the time of the budget, you either accept or don't accept a project based on whether you've got a plan or not.
I'd like to see it a little stronger than that.
Well, but I mean, in budget guidance, well, we can debate that. You know, I'll, I'll put that in the, in the guidance if you want me to put it in or I'll put it in.
Yeah, no problem.
All right.
Good.
That's all we had for your presentation at this point. Any questions? Yes, go ahead.
Will the BNF committee get this guidance document that you're putting together, Tom?
I have no problem with that.
They answer that.
Okay.
By the way, I have another Cheryl Jacobs thing. The, the same, same subject, move right along. Capital dollars not expended should not roll over, but rather should be withdrawn and not included following this budget unless proposed and accepted, voted. Thanks, Cheryl. Some, somehow or another, your document is going to address.
We'll answer that. Yeah.
That comment. Yeah.
Yes, it will.
Okay. Next on the adjutant is public comments. Are there any other public comments? Joe.
Joe Rivel, 84, can I wave at Tom Stauskas out there or watch?
Right down.
According to the budget, the guidance, the, when you come right down to it, and I've said this since 2004, budgets submitted by the general manager to every board the last 11, 12 years has not changed much at all. So the board, the, the committee meets for many, many hours. The board meets two, three days sometimes, and the board finally votes. In the end, the number that the budget has passed, that's eight million, 10 million, whatever it is, is within peanuts of what the general manager submitted in the first place. All the arguments are relatively small, like, like $10,000 whether we're going to have a bus or something like that. What happens is, the operational budget winds up almost always the same when it comes to the assessment that everybody's concerned about and commended. The debate usually takes place as to how much we're going to reduce or add to what we collect for reserves. So the big battles for this board of directors over the last 11 years are not so much in what Bob proposes or any general manager has for operations. The battles are over the total assessment and fundamentally, how much we're going to collect in reserves. So I think you need to think about that as you go through this. Talking about arguing over small things or big things, in the end, we're, we're going to spend that eight to 12 million. And what Bob proposes, if it's within a couple $300,000, it's going to be a lot in eight to 12 million dollars. There is one item that was, in last year's budget, it was changed. It came as a surprise to me, and it is a substantial item. And to my knowledge, it was zero discussion. It's in the range of 250,000. And that's something called the depreciation inflation factor applied to depreciation. Prior to last year, the depreciation inflation factor increased by something only 45%. In other words, staff here adds up what the depreciation is on all of our stuff. And then to come up with the amount of depreciation that actually goes into the assessment, they added 45% to. Last year, they added 0%. Now, in my mind, that's manipulation of budget because I don't ever remember the board of directors even talking about it. I don't remember, maybe the, the budget finance committee talked about it, but I don't recall it. Did you have discussions about the inflation factor last year?
I mean, I know, I know justification for it, or I would think I would have justification. As a committee, did we discuss it?
Yeah. What was the justification for it?
We fund depreciation. My understanding is we fund depreciation, as we should, to prepare for future capital needs. And the depreciation has been funded over 30 years, 40 years, whatever the, the timeline is, without any allowance for a cost of living increases. And so over a period of 30 or 40 years, if CPI were averaged 2% or 1% or whatever the number is, come up, I would imagine with that percent that you're referencing. And I don't, I mean.
Okay, no, no, you're, you're explaining the reason for it, and I understand the reason for it. What I don't understand is, once you explain the reason, the question becomes, why didn't we apply it last year? Why did we make it zero last year?
What was the inflation rate?
It's not, we've never had a 45% inflation rate.
But that was because it was in the 30 or 40 years.
So what was the inflation?
All I'm suggesting is that the seven members of this board of directors discuss at some point with staff or whatever, why do we, why were we adding 45% to the total depreciation, which is a sizable sum of money? And we did not last year. And how much will be this? That's all I'm suggesting.
Was it because, I don't know the answer, but was it because we made it accumulative? That we had to, or are you saying we did 45% every year?
It was not the same every year.
It was not the same.
Why, it was a high number.
We funded, from the beginning of this organization, we funded capital solely from depreciation. And by 1990s, late, mid 90s, they realized, this organization realized, we were withdrawing more from the reserves than depreciation was putting in. So then they came up around year 2000 and started putting in an inflation factor to make up for the money that they needed to have to get the acquisitions they needed in each year. And then that was added on to, with the five-year plan. There was a lot of different plans. In between that, there was herky-jerky rate increases, like $103 just one year for new, for capital. And so then in five years, it's all because this corporation doesn't actually do what a lot of HOAs do and collect the full replacement cost of, of everything it has every, every year. It doesn't do that. And there is a problem structurally within Ocean Pines to do that. If a project's going to cost over a certain amount, you got to go to referendum. Is it right to collect all that ahead of time and then, then go to referendum? Or should you, you know, that, that's an issue.
Yeah. Okay. Any other public comments?
Yes.
For, this, this is, I'm speaking on behalf of Gene Ringsburg, not committee other, but to Carriage Lane now. Trying to move.
You want to get out of this place, right?
You're not going to get rid of me.
We're trying to move to the park, but I've already got a citizen's.
Is that why you're building that gate?
With respect to the major maintenance and replacement reserves, I would suggest that this carryover conversation is extremely important because in, in the fiscal year ended April 30th, 2015, that spending in that reserve was budgeted for 3.5 million. We spent 1.8 million. So 1.7 million didn't get spent. It's about 50% didn't get spent in 2015. So that carryover is there now. I mean, if, if you want to talk about carryover, there was 1.7 that wasn't spent. I would suggest then that the board really look at that strongly and factor that in as to, as a factor in deciding how much you want to charge for new dollar contributions coming into the reserve. Secondly, I would suggest that because politically, it would, you know, if you're going to have, ignore that 1.7 that wasn't spent, and that therefore we ended the year at, at April 30th with more reserves than we had anticipated, then, and the fact that there's no capital improvement plan, I think you could get into some political hot water fights, you know, just saying, okay, we'll add another, you know, 6 million to the reserve without thinking about 1.7. The other item that I want to bring up is the fact that right now, for the last couple of fiscal years, we've ended up with a historically high amount in the bulkhead reserve. And for the purpose of new membership to welcome, most of the money in, most of the money in the bulkhead reserve, I'll say maybe 85% of the money in the bulkhead reserve, those dollars are the only dollars in the entire reserve that's not intended to be spent on OPA property. Those dollars are intended to be spent on bulkheads owned by the membership. Now, that's at a historically high point. And I, I've been hearing from people within Ocean Pines, the, that say that they realize that it's going to cost a lot more later to replace all the private bulkheads. And they, they need to collect more to, in order to do that over the future years. That's fine. But I would say, get the, sorry, scratch that. Get the, get the plan out so that you're not having people feeling like, well, you're just accumulating more and more money. And that's what's happening now. Because at times in the past, when I was on the committee before, we would wind up with maybe a $100,000 balance, zero balance, negative balance. And that, we're, we're running a, and in a year around 700,000 or whatever it was. So it, it, it doesn't make sense politically. If, if you have a plan and put it out to people, I think you're going to more readily accept it. And, and I know that there's a controversy as to whether or not there's a plan. The annual report said there was a new plan. This current annual report says there's a new plan.
Right.
But then I've been told, no, we're studying a new plan. We're, we're trying to come up with an appropriate rate for bulkhead owners to pay. I was told that at our last budget meeting.
Well, I hope, one thing, Dave, that we're working on right now is this reserve study. I hope the reserve study will answer some of these questions.
Not that one.
Not that one.
Not, not that one. That, that's a, no, they're not.
Because that's not a private property.
They're, they're including.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Drainage, bulkheads, hold on your brooms.
Yeah.
All the infrastructure.
So the, so the, yeah, I mean, certainly that data.
So I think, hopefully they'll give an outside third opinion about what's going on.
What does that do?
Right.
The reserve study, when are we expecting it back?
The final product will probably be January.
Yeah, Jan.
Final product will probably be January.
Well, along those lines, Bob, will we see preliminary information? Will you keep us, you know, in line as the process unfolds? Or are we only going to see the final product?
No, whatever their process is that we laid out when we made the determination to engage with DMA, we're going to follow their process.
It's my understanding that we'd see information.
What did you just say, David?
It's my understanding that we would see information before January.
Okay.
Not talking about the final product, but, but in any way, I don't know exactly.
Yeah, you're right.
I've, I've asked via email three occasions in the last 20, like, days to get access to see what is described, audited financial, has extensive surveys of our projects. Do those surveys exist? Can an association member see? If it's in the audited, so do those surveys exist, Bob?
Are we talking budget finance or are we doing a?
No, it's an agenda topic.
Yes, well, it is.
Remember, many, Bob.
All right.
Do you want me to address this?
Go ahead and address it.
Mr. Clark brought up, and I've seen Mr. Randall's email as well, a question on one of the addendums in the back of the audited financial report. It's not part of the financial reports, part of the schedules at the end for supporting documentation. There was a, appears to be, and I'm trying to get some additional information on it, an error because if you look at dates 13 and 14, 2013, 14, we've talked to, I talked to Art, our controller, and we've talked to Chris Hall from the auditing firm. And that language should have been written differently for this year. With that being said, if you refer to our budget, there are still outstanding bulkheads that still need to be completed. And when word stood to budget, it was clear with the plan for the next two years. We have two more years left on the bulkhead replacement, the original bulkhead replacement. That, that did not really answer the question of, do we have extensive surveys indicating what needs to be done?
I'm trying, as I passed on Mr. Clark last week. I'm trying to see what surveys we do have.
As for the addendum in the back, as I read it, and I pulled it out again, look at it, it seems to me that he audited wrote on that addendum that it was a required item.
There's, it's a schedule in the back of the report.
Says it's required. It's a schedule. But anyway, you, you understand the point. We're, we're marking on a $24 million program over a long period of time. And the, and audited report, which should be, you know, if it was something wrong with that report, somebody should have picked it up initially. And if there's not something wrong with the report, what, what can I say? I'm looking at an audited financial. Forgive me.
So, so in essence, then the current. So in essence, then, the current bulkhead program, 35 years, is not quite finished. It's got another two years to go.
That's correct.
Okay.
And there is no plan for, existing right now for the next 25?
That's also correct. Mr. Terry Tom, guitar man.
Tom Terry.
Tom Terry. Tom Terry, last budget meeting, said there's some kind of study going on now as to the rates to be charged, bulkhead. You said you're looking into that. You said the board is looking into that.
There's lots of things that you have to...
I'm just saying, Tom, is the board looking into that?
I was referring to the fact the board is going to have to approve the next plan, which is 25 years after these two years.
Okay, I didn't get that impression.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. I mean, if that work is going on, not, we're not doing it. Bob and his staff is doing it.
I thought you said...
That has to be established.
I thought, I got the impression from your word that some members of the board had directed that a study be done now as to the rates to be charged.
Owners, not today. Sorry if this...
Okay, I misinterpret a lot of things, yeah. But I like to bring them out.
I move to go back into regular parliamentary...
Reinforce it. Okay, well, the next item on the agenda is... Tom, do you have any questions? Yes, Josh.
Tom, is that report you're going to draft, is it something I could get a copy of?
It's an internal work document to the board right now. It's a draft document.
I have that.
Okay.
Any other media question?
I move to a jar.
Second?
Second.
Pat, thank you very much. Tim, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.